Are you ready to get started? Okay.
Yep, I think we're ready.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Um, to roll call. Amber Brown here.
Susan Dominickini here.
Karen Combs here.
Maggie Buckley here.
Is that, I guess that's it today, huh?
That's it, and that is a quorum, yeah.
Okay.
We're good.
Uh, I'll go ahead and do, okay. I'll go ahead and do the school verse. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. And is there any audience to address the committee? Right, I'm not seeing any. So we can approve minutes from December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I will motion to approve the minutes from December.
Hold on, I think I skipped, sorry, Karen. I think I skipped, um, agenda modification. I don't think we have any, are we good?
I actually, I do have some agenda modifications. I'm trying to pull up the agenda right now, so I can do that. Hold on.
Oh, thank you, Alex.
Oh, there it is, okay, thank you. So. I'll roll down a little bit further if you can. Let's see what I'm looking at for business. I'd like to table the LCAP update. Didn't get that done, and it's not due until the end of February, so we'll do that.
Okay.
And then, okay, I have a combined discussion on the preschool program and sustainable schools. So I think if we just eliminate four point two at this point, it'll make more sense.
Oh, meaning they're the same thing?
I put it together, and I started with the preschool program, and then there's a lot of questions or discussion that we can have around how I'm getting those numbers. So I think that makes more sense than me trying to, to do two separate items at this point, so. You'll see it when we get to that document, which I just finished, so we can talk about it only there.
Okay, great. All right, so now, we can approve minutes from December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Hey, I'll make another motion to approve the minutes from December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you, Maggie. And, um, so we'll go for approval, Amber Brown, aye?
Karen Combs, aye.
Susan Dominickini, aye.
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Okay, and then the teleconferencing during state of emergency, we just have to let everybody know that's still an option. Or that we're doing that. And then, financial report.
All right, hello, everyone. This is pretty similar to last month. I guess revenue's a little worse, simply put. So the challenge, working with this year's forecast, if we remove the accounting timing of the PPP, that we're operating with a three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar loss, inclusive of receiving six hundred and twenty-four thousand specialized funding. So, a pure budget perspective, it's a million dollar loss, but you've got that six hundred and twenty-four to cover that and knock it down to a three seventy-one. So, a month ago, I would have been probably talking about a two eighty, and when we updated the enrollment trend, the attendance trend, it knocked another hundred thousand off the outlook for revenue. So that's what's driving it. So the on, what we would call the ongoing revenue compared to budget is down about two eighty-one compared to budget. We were able to take on more one-time revenue to reduce that down to about a hundred thousand below. The expenses above budget, that's the same as it was last month where we looked at the trend and the supports in place. They were gonna run that range, about two eighty-three hundred above. So that hasn't really changed from the outlook presented in December based on November. But that's up there. Cash, today cash is still solid, four hundred and nineteen. It was a good receipt this month, receipts on the quarterlies. But we do have to have the warning that if you're essentially operating at a three seventy-one loss, and there's cash timing with the federal money is slow, that will put cash stress, basically, if that continues out, the very beginning of next year will be a cash stress point, kinda like it was back in, let's say nineteen twenty. We'd be returning to that kinda cash timing stress concern. Notes on all the compliance happening, the compliance list is very significant in January and February, but a lot of those are reports that are due in January. So I just summarized that into, there's numerous reports that are in process and will be completed in January. And then key items for consideration for management and the board, the School of Accountability Report Card is coming up. Uh, that's last year's information, that'll be due February first. And then, as Susan mentioned, this year, they added the annual update to the LCAP because so much changed from when the LCAP was approved. Today, they wanna have a mid-year update that will be included in the year-end LCAP. So in February, it's just a presentation to the board, the board doesn't vote on it. But that presentation will be included in the LCAP in the spring, when the new LCAP is approved. Updating the attendance trend. You can see a lot of this being driven, attendance is trending in the range of two forty-four, and that looks like the most likely outcome this many months in. We still have opportunity to shift that one way or the other, but that looks pretty solid right now through the first three learning periods. The rate, obviously, those were very difficult times, but the rate was down in the range of ninety percent on the, on the two seventy range enrollment, ninety percent attendance. That LCFF is about nine thousand five hundred eighty-eight. So if we move that any further, any direction, I give you an idea, roughly ten thousand dollars. Not a lot of difference in the revenue update compared to last month, other than that attendance decline and the expectation. So, same expectation for how the one-time funding is being allocated. Six hundred and twenty-four this year, the balance five hundred and sixty-three is currently allocated for next year to maintain as best at same level. Uh, the risks there with declining attendance revenue is this year's operating at about a three seventy-one, and next year, at this expense level and this attendance level, right? At five sixty-three, you're still looking at another three hundred thousand dollar loss next year, which obviously, things will change before the third year, but carried out in the third year would be closer to a eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar loss. But just per showing at that two forty-four plus and the current expense level, what that overage looks like. Expenses very similar to last month for comparing back prior budgets. So there was approvals for, you know, increased costs for staffing, social emotional supports, recruitment and IT. So that's really what's in place in this budget. Um, still right around four million, which is what was discussed a month ago.
Um, Susan, are there any grants that are still pending? Like the MTSS grants? Or anything that could help knock that number down?
Uh, yeah, the MTSS won't really come in, it might come in in March. It has some specific requirements as to how we spend that money. Um, and I'm, I mean, I said this before and I'll say it again, the change in what the state is doing over this past year or so, with increasing our funding, they're also being really particular about how we spend it. So whereas LCAP and LCSFF was like, here's your money, you figure out what you need to do within parameters and goals. And the current funding with Newsom's administration and the current legislature is very much, here's the money, here's what you get to spend it on. Um, so it's a lot harder to do some of that flexing or backfilling that we might have been able to do before.
Thank you for explaining that, Susan, and thank you for just all the time you've spent trying to find grants for the school over time because it's really helped us, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we can, we can note that the governor's first proposal um, is to increase LCFF. The rate of increase about double what was initially assumed, now that won't be realized until May and June, but at least the outlook for next year is higher marginal LCFF. But, um, the trend also has been, like Susan said, start attaching more strings even to that marginal growth. You know, which, when that used to be just growth was growth, now even the marginal growth is having more.
Yeah, that, I, I think there's a real lack of understanding that about the increase in administrative costs connected to, um, you know, all the additional reporting. I got a list of seven different reports that are due this month. It's pretty crazy, so, um, that's, we're handling it, we're getting it done, but it's, yeah, I don't think they really understand that that takes away from our student time.
Absolutely. Yeah, so showing, showing the, the overall impact, you know, if we talk about this as a three seventy-one, um, with the PPP forgiveness included, but overall, you can see that at this level, the fund balance would end at about seven seventy-four, which is nineteen percent of the current expenses. It ended last year at about one point one million, thirty-two percent. So you can see the immediate impact of the difficulty of this year, trying to run a four million dollar budget without that level of funding support. Cash fortunately, right now is still solid, but like I said, the concern is, there could be some more, uh, positive outcomes compared to this, but the federal money runs late, you have to spend it and then claim it. And so that creates more cash pressure, and so this forecast model shows the year ending, uh, just above two hundred thousand, which isn't terrible until you start bringing in the, the open purchases, and then it really creates strain. So you would end June okay, within your July, August, September are under great strain. So, I expect there will be some, um, other supplemental grants that will be in the bank, buffering that money, but you'll have the situation where you have cash in the bank that you're not allowed to spend. So it'll help insofar as you have enough cash, spending cash to spend on your eligible activities, that you have another hundred, you know, offering your total in bank, but we're gonna have to be really careful then if we're like not participating in a grant and they sent us money. Should that happen, that's happening now to a lot of schools. Um, or it's restricted, like you're not allowed to use money this year yet. We're gonna get to that point where we really have to be careful with how many dollars are in the bank, and they, they can't get too low because they can't actually be spent. And then there's the, there's a long list of July reports um, that are in, that are in the works. Not to be worried, they're in the works. And in February, key items being the SARC and the LCAP supplement. Are there any questions about the December financial?
I have a, I have a question. Um, hate to be the one to bring it up, but when do we start having conversations about where we might need to cut? What is gonna look like next year? Um, because I, I do worry that this, um, attendance trend is going to stay um, for various reasons. And even if we pick up money, you know, with different programs, um, you know, it still seems like it's going to be an issue. Sorry if I'm not being that eloquent right now, I'm still feeling under the weather, but yeah, I was just wondering, when do we kinda start having those conversations? I mean, we probably have to have a certain amount of students to run a certain size budget, and so where's those capped at? Like, is it two hundred and thirty-five students, and then we go somewhere, is it two forty-five, and you know, where, where, where are we at with that? When do we start having those conversations?
Uh, so, uh, generally, we have those conversations in February and make decisions in March as far as staffing, because that's when we're really looking at um, letting teachers know what their assignments are for next year, and that's sort of the, the baseline of what we need to do. Um, so, what I have in, there's a couple of information items in the, in my report today, as well as the Sustainable Works, Work Plan, because that's really Sustainable School Plan, because that's really where I'm trying to really look at numbers now, on the work we did last year with the um, salary schedules and getting, taking care of the minimum wage increases and so forth, have given me that option. So you'll see, when we talk about the preschool program, there are some parameters, there are some assumptions that I put in there that I really like this, um, committee to look at, and then that'll help me go forward with what Sustainable School is. Because to me, Amber, that's part of that process, it's not just cutting to make sure we make budget next year, that's an absolute necessity, but really, what is our goal for the school? Um, and where we want to be, and I think that, you know, as part of looking at a new building and all that, we need to be doing kind of a longer range, bigger picture, not just what are we gonna do next year, but like, where are we gonna be five years and ten years out? So that's what I'm working on right now, so.
I agree. Yeah, and that's what I kinda meant, like, are we gonna say, okay, we're, we're only gonna be able to sustain this many students? And this many teachers, and what does that look like in the big picture moving forward? And I, and I apologize, I didn't just mean for next year, but I did mean like for the big picture in the future. Um, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Because if we don't, you know, have a massive uptake in our enrollment, we're gonna, we're gonna be probably in these same numbers next year.
Right, which we can afford.
Right, right, so, um, thank you, that was, thank you for answering that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I think I'm good, does anybody else have any questions?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you, Jim. And, let's see. We don't need to approve anything, right, Susan, we're good to move on? Or do we need to approve this to go to the board, or, I'm sorry, I don't remember? You're on mute, but I think you said we have to approve it to go to the board.
We need to recommend it to go to the board, that's what I said.
Recommend it to go to the board, yeah, thank you. I can read lips. Um.
Okay, I'll make the motion to submit the January financial reports to the Charter Council for approval.
And I can second that, I got to, Maggie, I'll second it.
All right, we got a second from Susan. Um, so we'll go to a vote, Amber Brown, aye?
Karen Combs, aye.
Susan Dominickini, aye.
Maggie Buckley, aye.
All right. Moving on, um, let's see. My, my thing went away, oh, there we go, thank you, Alex. Um, okay, so business review donation.
I move that we recommend, um, the, that the, uh, Charter Council accept these donations.
I second.
Okay. Um, we'll go for a vote, Amber Brown, aye?
Karen Combs, aye.
Susan Dominickini, aye.
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Okay, so LCAP update, we're scratching that, so lease extension.
So we reached, I reached out to, um, Lean Brothers for another extension on the lease, um, and to give us another year as we were intending to be out of this building in a year, this is what, by two thousand and twenty-three July, this is what they, um, presented to us as what they're offering. So it is a, Jim, what is our monthly now, what is our monthly rate? Do you know?
Make it firm.
Okay.
Forty-nine thousand.
Okay, yeah, so they're increasing it by about two point, two thousand five hundred a month, um, which is a significant increase. But, the option of trying to go find another location for a year just isn't an option, so.
Looks like.
I'm considering the market right now, I don't think we would have any better options either.
Jim, did you wanna say something?
Sorry, I was gonna say, it looks, it looks like five percent.
Okay.
Yeah. So is that something we need to recommend to the board, or is it just an FYI? Yeah, recommend to the board.
Recommend to the board, yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion to recommend the Blue Oak Charter Amendment to the original lease dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen?
I will sadly move to recommend this to the board, the, um, lease extension beginning, um, December, two thousand and twenty-one.
And I will also sadly, um, uh, second that. The comment that I, I wanna make in the meantime is I was really starting to worry that they were not gonna allow us to do this because it took them seven months to get back to me after they're, we're disgusted, and it's always starting to get to the point was, do I need to look for another place for next year? And so, yes, it's a huge increase, and I'm not happy about that, but the option is much worse, so.
It, and it could have been worse, I mean, there really is no cap on what they could have done, right? I mean, that I'm aware of, so.
Yeah, we're, we're kind, yeah, we're kind of over a barrel, so, you know.
Yeah, yeah, so I think five percent, considering what the market looks like right now, is actually more reasonable than they needed to be. I mean, I know it's a hit for us right now, but I'm, I'm definitely glad you got this taken care of, good job on that. I, I mean, we needed it, and it's two thousand a month is not great, but it could have been worse.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so we'll all sadly, uh, vote on this. Amber Brown, aye?
Karen Combs, aye.
Susan Dominickini, aye.
Maggie Buckley, aye.
All right, and Susan, Executive Director Report?
Um, Susan, I did really have one question, do we have like a, a deposit on the rental, or?
Yeah, we have, um, we do, I think it's like thirty thousand, something like that.
Okay.
Kind of a cleaning deposit, yeah, we do.
Oh, nice.
Mm-hmm. Uh, okay, so, um, Alex, did you get my last minute report that I sent into you this afternoon late? That I wrote it out, I, I can just go to it myself, but I'm wondering if you can pull it up and share it.
Um, I didn't see, I saw the two other documents, I didn't see if, um, Executive Director's Report, but I can search through my drive.
Okay, I'll start talking, and then if you find it, it can set it up for them, that'll be great. Um, so mainly what I, um, wanted to talk about as far as, from the Executive Director's Report, as Jim mentioned in his report, our next year's budget is coming out, are the governor's proposal, and, um, I guess the state is feeling like they have some work to do with schools and pretty flush. The proposal as it stands right now, um, would put us at about twenty thousand per student, that's not, of course, what we would receive per student, we now receive, as Jim said, a little under ten thousand, but the overall funding increase to education, including the state and so forth, is significant, it's about, it looks like about eight thousand per student, which is great. Um, there are a lot of strings attached to it, so I gave you the list of what, what they're proposing, the different pots of money that, um, they're proposing, so. Um, so overall, from a funding standpoint, that's good news, that certainly will help us if we get more funny funding, to deal with our current deficit issues, so that's part of the calculation as we move forward into planning for next year. There are two other things going on in the state that I wanted to inform you about. Um, the first one is that, yay, okay, so, um, state budget, this is the current information, it comes from Edsource about what they are talking about, the five point three-three, um, one-time funding for school construction projects, which would be wonderful if we can get that for, to support our new, um, new school. You know, and then therefore reduce our long-term costs on that. Um, Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, this is a big issue, they, and something that we've said we were gonna do, and we're trying to figure out how. This is the, um, after-school program primarily keeping, having things available for kids until six PM. Um, they want us to do that, they funded it for one year, and most schools are going, uh, to expand the program, to do an after-school program, and then only do it for one year is not, um, possible, is not feasible for most of us. Expanded childcare, which we'll talk about with our potential, um, preschool program. High school career path, doesn't affect us too much, we might be able to get some money for our upper grades classes, but that's not gonna be a lot of funding for us as a K-8. Rainy day funds, don't know exactly what that'll be, um, when it comes right down to it. Electric buses, that would be awesome if we could get some transportation money. Currently, charter schools don't get transportation money, so there's something that we might need to deal with. Arts and music programs, of course, we would benefit from that. Literacy coaches, great, that would help our reading program. Um, and multilingual schools and classroom libraries, that of course, with our work in our Spanish, that could also help us. So a lot of it seems to apply to us. Um, so helpful, but again, as you can see, um, a lot of very specific ways of needing to use money, and, and instead of being able to like folder arts program into our classroom program, they may have really specific requirements for that, that may or may not fit the Waldorf, um, structure. So those are all the things we'll have to look at. The good news is, they are serious about increasing funding for schools, so that's good.
Oh, that's really good news.
Yeah.
I, I have a quick question before you move on about, um, you kinda glazed over the after-school program. Is this something that we already have? Is this the kindergarten one or is this, I'm not sure what that is?
So we have some, the expanded learning is basically, think of it as increasing hours of availability, so it's for, both for childcare purposes as far as having after-school programs like our homework club, things like that available after school for middle schoolers. And increasing tutoring and summer school programs, so that's the way that they have defined it. At this point, that's my understanding. So for, for example, right now we have a card program. We might be able to subsidize that for families that need it rather than them having to pay the full price. We don't really have a solid program for middle schoolers, so developing a middle school program for children to be here after three fifteen to six, that timeframe and really solidly staff that. Right now we have some teachers who do some additional hours because they believe in what they're doing. But we don't really have a funded after-school coordinator and it's really, it's, it's something that would take more than just saying, here, teachers, let's do more work. It's really about like, how are we going to structure it? How are we going to take attendance? All that that would need to be done. So that's why it's, it's hard when they throw us funding for one year to develop all that and then have it go away.
See what you're saying. So it's only supposed to be funding for one year?
Yeah, they gave us, or they did not give us enough to really do it well and then relooking at that because Blue Oak isn't the only place that's saying, hey, this really isn't functioning well. Um, we talked to, you'd counting off Office of Ed last week about it and they said, well, you know, they have certain schools they already work with and even though their goal is to serve everybody, they can't go beyond what they're already doing the way it's funded, so it's, it's, uh, yeah, it just wasn't with a lot of the things that have come out of their last, they haven't really thought everything through before they decided to approve it. And so then it comes to us and we're going, that's really difficult, so they're learning.
Right, and that, and that's part of the funding that you're saying is really specific.
Yeah.
Um, and with that, that would probably play into our sustainable school. Because I, I will tell you as somebody that has four children in the school and is currently trying to go back to work, like, it's a challenge because Card has seventeen families on the waitlist currently. Um, you know, Thursdays being half days, which, you know, I love. But then also if you're a working parent, it's extremely challenging. And then third piece being, you know, I have a seventh grader and I live on the other side of town, so how, what would I do with her after school even if I had it for my other kiddos, you know? I'd be putting her on the public bus. Not a big fan. So, uh, as a parent that's kind of now a little bit struggling with that, I think that's sort of a bit of a negative for our school and I get that feedback a lot from parents that I try to get over to Blue Oak is, you know, well, I gotta get him over to the other side of town. Then they have half days on Thursdays. Um, I think our, what we've added to Kinder is huge. That, I know for me as a parent, that's been extremely helpful this year. Um, but yeah, that would be interesting to see how that was going to work and I think that that would help with enrollment if we had a program and we were able to, you know, I mean, if it was structured like you were saying, like a homework club after school and um, they were actually learning something or doing something productive, that would be great, um, as far as, you know, the big picture for keeping their, you know, for selling the school. I think that would all be really helpful. Um, so those were just comments, but my question is, do we have like a committee for the sustainable school and I'm sorry if I should already know this?
So we are the committee for the Sustainable School.
Oh, okay, great, because I wanted to be part of it, so.
You are, yeah.
Perfect, yeah. Okay, great.
Yeah, and I, I think that happened when Chelsea was in your position, so that's why you probably don't understand, haven't heard it, yeah. We haven't done much since it took over.
Oh, okay, but that is something we might maybe, because since we're talking about budget, we might need to start having maybe another meeting or tack on to this meeting regarding that. Might be a good idea to start soon, you think?
Yes, I do. I do.
Okay, because that could help with budgeting and what we're looking at for next year.
Yes.
And how we can get creative with money we're getting and things like that and also helping with our marketing, right?
Mm hmm, yes, definitely. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
You're very welcome. No, I'm glad to have that conversation. Um, so then from the school standing standpoint, there are a couple other things going on at a state level I wanted to make sure and inform you of. If you're not aware, charter school funding is a year-to-year funding process, so part of our issue, as Jim explained with, with the budget earlier, is that we budgeted it at two ninety and then we dropped to two seventy. Well, that is an issue that is specific to charter schools. Districts do not have that issue because they are allowed to choose whether they take this year's funding or last year's. And so California Charter Schools Association is currently working at a state level to advocate. And from what I am hearing, there, there is some reception to that to at least give us that same option as districts have, so that we could go back and have last year's ADA for for this year and then have the opportunity to plan for next year, so that they have brought that up as part of the overall loss of enrollment for the state, because this is a, the loss of enrollment for the state is big for even the largest of school districts. We're a small school district and four million feels like a lot, but it really isn't when you compare us to Oakland or San Francisco or Marin. You know, we're really very small and those larger districts are having significant problems as well, so the legislature is really working at that. So that's one of the pieces that is going on at the state and the other one.
Parents get, sorry, do we have parents get involved with that? Do we reach out to them and have them, you know?
Well, I, or do we? Yeah, so I am not allowed to do that. As an employee of the school, I am not allowed to use my position, and now as a director of the school, I am not allowed to use my position to suggest that action. However, certainly parents can do that. And C C S A would love to have anyone's support that that, so this is one of those very, I need to be very careful with my language. I will certainly be glad to give you information about how to contact or work with C C S A and advocate for that. But I personally cannot suggest that you do that. You know, so the.
But like, I could go to our parent council meeting and talk about it.
You absolutely could, Amber.
Okay.
That is totally within your.
I'll get that.
I can, okay, great. Um, and the other thing that is going on, I think, can you roll it down just a little bit further, Alex? Yeah, okay. Um, so the other thing is there's actually currently a bill being proposed on this. From what I understand, it needs a lot of work. It's not written very well. It was written very quickly and so the the legislature and the advocates are like, we need to rewrite this, but it's also a very good option. They're talking about having funding much less dependent on attendance. So, you know, because our expenses, if the students don't come to school, our expenses for the years do not change. And yet we are physically punished for they're not attending. So there's work being done that we would have at least an option to choose enrollment rather than attendance as our funding base, which does, you know, as again, as Jim just talked about, we looking at our numbers from what our plan for the year was and enrollment dropped and then our attendance is also, he's saying we're another hundred thousand down because of attendance. You know, in a time where people are truly struggling to get to school, so that is another bill that I want people to be aware of that could increase our stability as far as funding in the future and our ability to have the time to plan for changes. So those are, those are the big things that are going on at a state level really for us that I wanted you to be.
I mean, that's, that's good that they're at least having those conversations because that's what I was kind of saying that I don't think it's going to change because I think parents are, you know, a little bit more careful and keeping their kids out of school a little bit longer when they're sick. I definitely know I'm one of those. Um, it's more cautious and it's, it's a bummer that the schools get punished for that because really we're doing the right thing. You know, and then also other challenges I know um, parents are having, getting their kids to school and being able to work and have care and it's a lot right now, so. Um, I'm glad that they're having those conversations, but it might be helpful for some of us parents that are involved to have that conversation with other parents so that we can be advocates for the school. Um, but I, I don't, I don't think everyone's I know I wasn't knowledgeable about that. I didn't know. So, um, I'm sure there's a lot of other parents that are just, just don't know how it works and, and where we're at in funding and things. So, thank you for that information.
Absolutely. So that's my report, my director's report.
Okay. Um, so that was the state, the state budget and staffing, is that all the same or?
Yes, pretty much. Um, I think, you know, we had already, we already talked about staffing long-term as far as you know, with the current budget structure. Sort of feel like I'm again going through what I went through in twenty twenty, which was, hey, we don't know what the funding is going to be and then boom, here's just a lot of money, so I, I, we will kind of went through this already once. I feel like we're kind of going through that again right now, whereas I, you know, I'm hoping they have some level of direction for us so we can make better decisions and, and that Jim and I can work on a budget that makes sense for the school in the next couple of months. So it's just a really, really interesting time. You know, very interesting times. That's what I would say, yeah.
It's kind of plan for the worst, hope for the best.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Okay, well, this is, I just had a lot of questions too because I just want to make sure I'm really informing the council well on this too, since it's gonna come up a lot. I'm, and if they're looking at the financial reports, they're obviously going to have questions too.
Yeah.
Um, okay, cool. Thank you so much. That was extremely thorough and appreciate the details.
Yeah, yeah. We shall see.
Yeah, okay, so the number four, Sustainable School Design Task Force, which is us that I've just learned.
Yes.
We're going to talk about the preschool program.
Right. So Riley came and talked to both finance and the the council last month about a preschool program. And so the work that I've done based on that, everybody seemed really interested in doing it, is to go through and start doing some financial plant, more specific financial planning around it. I mean, that sort of just kind of decided this was really also a discussion about sustainable schools because I started to work on the kind of calculations we would need to do for that and the way we would need to do it. So please look at this from a preschool planning standpoint, but also from a sustainable school standpoint to see what kind of questions that you might have. So I'll just go over, first of all, you have to make some assumptions. In preschool, the adult-to-student ratio is ten to one maximum, so um, the, the assumption that I made is that we would have twenty, twenty students, that would mean two full-time staff members. At a rate of twenty students, I use the number of two ninety as our total student base. Hopefully that's a conservative number, but I wanted to be careful not to get, um, you know, our hope is to have somewhere up in the mid-three, three hundreds, but we are not there now and so I wanted to be careful there. So I estimated that that will be about seven percent of our full student population. Um, I use the current financial reports that we just went through as my basis for costs and the assumption that, that if you went back to Jim's report and saw that line that's colored green, that's the one that I used for my stuff. And so I use daily rate comparisons because it seems the, the most simple to do rather than annual, annual numbers or monthly numbers, because months change when you're paying for a service, they may change from month to month because we have some months with sixteen days, school days, some with ten, some with twenty. So it's hard to do a month-to-month comparison. Anyway, so the first, stop me at any time if you have a question. I'll take a breath. Yes, I can just run through this really quick because that's my tendency with numbers and I know sometimes that's too fast. So take a breath. Okay, so the next thing I moved on to is classroom staff. Now, the, there is a requirement for, and one of the things we're looking at is whether or not we can use uh, state funding. I'm not sure of that yet, but so I did some work around that particular funding. We also know that they may be increasing this funding or changing it in the current budget, as you saw that it was also mentioned as something childcare was something they're looking at funding. So, um, a classroom staff in a general preschool, state preschool would be a basically what's called a teacher director. And when I reviewed that teacher director, that position can be covered by someone with an administrative credential, so myself and Rachel, we both have administrative credentials, so we don't need a special person to do that for preschool. We, and then a lead teacher, which can be a non-credentialed person or a credentialed person, so I have those two options as far as a classroom staff person. A preschool funding is generally lower than classroom funding, so that's one of the reasons you might use a non-credentialed teacher there. So I, I show both a lead teacher cost per day. I've included, I went through in my calculations to figure out benefits about thirty, we spend an additional thirty percent approximately on benefits above the, you know, salary schedule, so I just included that in the, in the cost of each of the positions. So a lead teacher would be at the current rates at a hundred ninety-five. A credentialed teacher, our costs are higher. So three hundred and eighty-four dollars a day is the lowest, you know, that would be a brand-new teacher. The five hundred and eighty-four is about a nine-year, ten-year teacher, so you know, so I put both of those in. And then a teacher's aide, which would be for an eight-hour day, would have to include full-time and would have to be benefited. So we're looking at about twenty-one and a half dollars, that's someone with about three years of experience or a hundred and seventy-eight per day. So those are all things I did. Anytime you're talking about staff, it can come in lower, it can come in higher. Um, you can't be really specific until you've actually hired the person, person and all of that, then the things change anyway. So that, these are all assumptions and estimates on class, the actual classroom staff. Kyron, is this making sense to you, numbers man? Okay. All right, if I've got. Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
I, I, no, go ahead, Amber, so.
Sorry, um, I was just going to say, so we'll only need one lead non-credentialed teacher or credentialed teacher and then one teacher of the eight. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's two total. I specifically put subpay in there and it's, you know, that's expecting each of, that's where the estimation of each position begun at a maximum of ten days during the year, because unlike our classrooms, the, the ten to one is a requirement. So we will always need to make sure that's covered with some sort of a substitute, so I wanted to make sure to note that. And that's something we need to take very seriously. Yeah, so that's, it would be two staff members, two full-time staff members in order to cover that.
And what you're, oh, go ahead, Kyron. Go ahead, Kyron.
Sorry, um, so at fifteen hundred dollars a day in total costs, twenty students, that would be about seventy-five dollars. Per student. That we would charge families.
We'll get there, Tyron. Let me, let me go through, yeah, we'll get there. So, um. So the additional costs that I added in to get to where Tyron is, is I took. Seven percent of all of the other operating costs. So, and I split out administration. Support staff, which is like the janitors, you know, facilities, staff, office staff, that. Group and then operational costs. And this one just really surprised me. I had to like double-check these numbers a number of times. So. That's uh, five hundred and twelve dollars is our average daily rate of operational costs, and that's things like materials and supplies. Overheads, uh, contracts, six, the security system. Uh, the building costs, all of that sort of stuff. So that's what's included there. So. Yeah, so the funds, so then down to the daily total, total costs, um, it would, I ranged it. Somewhere between eleven hundred forty-two and fifteen hundred. I divided that by eighteen students simply because of the ADA issue and enrollment issue. I don't want us to be at a point where. If we don't have a full classroom, we therefore cannot afford the program. So I. I um, was a little more conservative with the expectation of how often they'll be there. Again, we, they're talking about changing that, but this is where we are right now. So, um. So yeah, so that would be somewhere between sixty-three and eighty-five dollars a day cost to us, which is what we would then charge. Um, the families. Um, I am not, Amber, you're probably closer to those who are in the actual. Market of purchasing preschool and childcare. So I don't know, we compared it to um. Two other programs that Riley researched, so, and this was just for four and five-year-olds. Um, if we do three-year-olds, it's a little bit higher rate that's charged according to her research. Um, but that's where I got the other, which is somewhere under eight dollars. We would be over eight dollars um, an hour. Uh, for that service. So I don't know, Amber, any thoughts? Um, or ideas or people we should ask about the cost comparison?
Um, I think, so you're saying it's going to be forty-nine dollars basically per day? Is that what you're saying for child?
Yes, so the reimbursement rate, so the local, so there's two pieces here. Um, thanks for asking a question. I'm looking at the actual local cost comparison of what to run this program as a school classroom would cost. Generally preschools do not get as much money and do not pay as much money as a K-12 school does. So um, in taking on that, um. I think I've added some of, some of those adjustments into ours. Um, and we'll talk about whether or not we want to do that, how we want to do that as we go down to other questions. Um, so the reimbursement rate is what the current rate from the states of the twenty-one, twenty-two-year. Reimbursement is, so if we um, applied for state preschool and were funded for it, then. That is what they pay us to run the preschool. So um, if. So obviously if they're paying a maximum of fifty dollars a day and we're actually starting at seventy-five, then. There's some adjustments we're going to have to figure out there if that's the direction we want to go. Um, so that's why the two are a little different.
So, hmm, some of the feedback I got was, um. From some other parents was that were in the last meeting. Was the, the concern about it not being until five or six, so we're going to have some trouble with working parents. Um, I agree, I agree that I don't think that we should do the younger, the four-to-five-year-old seems like a good start, but. Between it being four-to-five-year-olds and then the program only running till three, now on Thursdays, is it going to be half-days or is it going to run? Till three.
Amber, those are things that we can still determine even, um, whether or not we want to go a longer day. Um, you know, if we go a longer day, of course, then as I talked about earlier, when we talked about the expanded learning, then we're going to look at. Uh, how are we going to staff that? Because we're not going to have some, one person doing a ten or twelve-hour day in order to cover that. So, yeah, so it makes it more complicated, but if that is really the need, then we can talk about doing that. And then we can also look at. What the expanded learning options are, because I believe the state's goal is to have. That every school do a longer day. Um, however, we also understand that. A seven-and-a-half to eight-hour day for a teacher is long enough. We're not going to ask them to do that additional work.
Yeah, and, and I.
Yeah, so that, that becomes, it would then be, that's why I broke it down to per hour. Because then if it's a ten-hour day, of course, there would be more, um, a longer, more cost to it for the person. Um, paying for it. Um, and again, if the state is talking about wanting us to do ten-hour days. For a preschool program, then hopefully they'll reimburse us more than fifty dollars. For a full day, because they're asking us to run, you know, a ten-hour day, not a six-hour day. There's a big difference there.
Well, twenty-five dollars a day is reasonable. You know, if it's, but not everyone's going to get subsidized, right? I mean, that's going to depend on income.
Right, right.
So, so I guess my thoughts on this is that. We're, we're going to have a very specific target market on this, right? It's going to be a very specific parent. So that's where it becomes challenging, right? It's going to be a, a parent that generally off by. Pickup time for the regular kids and, um. Also falls either inside income bracket or wants to pay extra for a Waldorf preschool. Because seventy-five dollars a day is what they would be paying if they don't qualify. Am I hearing that correctly?
That, yeah, that's, that's the, and that's for the eight-hour day, not the ten-hour day.
Right, which is pricey even for an AR day. Now, I haven't done, been in the childcare in a while, so. I would assume it's probably gone up a little bit just for the needs and, but I'm not quite sure. I don't know if she wound up checking with like Smart Start. I thought that was a good one, because they're subs, they do subsidy on what they're charging right now. Um, and I guess it would matter too with that threshold for income. I mean, if it's on the higher end, we might have a lot more people qualifying. So I guess it's, it's just going to be a, a really specific. Um, you know, uh, market of people that we're going to be tapping into. It's not going to be for everyone, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Um, with the way that it'd be set. I think it's great, and I, I think I would love for us to have a preschool program, but, um. Those to me would just be the concerns. And I know a couple of their parents that were. Working parents when their kids were young kind of said the same thing, you know. It's unfortunate, we don't want to have our kids in childcare till five or six, but it's. Sometimes the reality. Um, and so if we're not going to be offering that, and I understand the complications with on. How complicated that would be to offer the extra extended care. And with cards, they only do five-year-olds, right? So.
Right.
They don't do under five, so that's going to be not an option. Um, so we're just talking about, you know, very specific. Parents that are going to be, you know, being able to do this childcare. And so. If, like, say the county thinks there's like a need for it, and there's going to be a lot of parents that need that subsidized childcare. Then I think that would make it promising. Um, but otherwise, I'd be worried that, you know, we'd have enough enrollment.
Yeah, so, um, what you're saying, and I, I get it, is that we really need to have. And upgrades, as you said earlier, they're also talking about that, is we really don't have an option that takes care of the working parent. We have an option that takes care of the part-time parent, but not the full-time parent and, um, most. Parents who are looking at for childcare are looking for that option. So, and that's kind of why, um, I went. I added to the other questions and some of the work that Riley had done was, do we have options that are half-day and full-day? I know if we have, you know, we could, for example, have ten slots that were full-day and ten slots that are half-day. And then we would really only need, um, that. Those two students, those two staff members for half of the time rather than the full-time. So we could do some. We could do some of that sort of work as well. Um, you know, our. My experience, right?
We would still have, you know, that, those twenty students that we'd be hoping to feed into our kindergarten program. Which would help with our sustainable school, but we wouldn't have, um, as much as it being as much of a financial burden and also trying to get that enrollment. You know, we probably have a lot of the parents already at the school that have Kinders and first graders. Um, because I think we're just going to have a smaller pool of parents to pick from.
Yeah, if we, if we're not that full eight-hour, that full. Till five o'clock plus timeframe like card is when somebody's in card. Um, we're going to miss that group of parents that really need that full day, um, and they'll go elsewhere. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so, and then, and then like I said, you know, where's that, where's, what is the income level for that? Because seventy-five dollars. That gets to be, that's pretty pricey.
Right, and I don't have that off the top of my head. It's part of, there's a, it's part of the, um, LCAP and L-CFF. Requirements, um, and. Uh, Kelly Mackey would probably know it immediately, but, um, I don't have that on the top of my head. So.
And I, and I think. I mean, you would know better than I, but I don't know if it's necessary to have a credentialed teacher, but I would assume we would really want like maybe one of our. Um. Waldorf credentialed teachers to be, um, overseeing or mentoring.
Mm-hmm.
And then hopefully we'd work our program up and work with a teacher that would move into credentials and, you know, move in through the Waldorf. The way we would want them to be qualified to work for Blue Oak, um, but maybe starting off with somebody that's not as, not credentialed, maybe doesn't have as much experience. And having somebody more mentor them might make more sense in the beginning. Especially with, I mean. You would think seventeen or eighteen dollars an hour is a lot right now, but it, it's really not. So I think for like that aid to get somebody quality. We're probably going to be more in like that twenty-two dollar an hour, twenty-dollar an hour range, right? So to keep the cost down on the teacher, so we have. Um, you know, quality teacher's aid, but I think you're right on the ten and the ten, ten-half day. Because there's definitely parents that have other little ones and they're already home, and they don't do childcare, that would love that, you know, half a day. Um, just to have a little break and for the kids to have something structured and introduction to school. So I think that's super positive. Um, what about if it was just only half-day? Have you looked at those numbers?
Um, yeah, so a lot of the, the research for other preschools are like three-hour days. And that's a pretty common, um, offering, I think, um, which pretty much cuts all of our costs in half. By the way that I calculated this. So the cost per hour would still be pretty close to what I'm looking at here. It just would be. Um, a maximum say of thirty-five dollars for a three-hour program as opposed to. Um, the seventy-five dollars for a, a eight-hour program. That's right.
Right, but if you're paying thirty-five dollars and your, and your kids are, you know, in a, a Waldorf-inspired preschool. You know, that might be, um. That might be something that parents are willing to pay for, and then also with, we would still get the subsidy, right, for that? Would it go down?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's less, it's thirty dollars, I think, thirty, thirty-one dollars for a half-day program.
Oh, so they would, and then we're only at thirty-five dollars?
Yeah.
So you're talking about a few dollars different?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I know we're just kind of just talking about this, but maybe starting smaller and hoping to build up the program. Just since there's so, so much uncertainty. Might be a, a good approach. Um. But I do think that seventy-five dollars a day, uh, if you're, if it's not being subsidized, subsidized, there's going to be a challenge. And even if it is, and you're still paying twenty-five dollars a day, but you're only getting eight hours. I would be interested to see like, like I said, where somewhere like Smart Start is, because they even, they bus students and they do after-school care too. You know, I mean, they've been around for a long time and obviously have it down. Um. But, and they, I think they do all the way down to like eighteen months too, so. Would be inter, which they built on that program. Originally, they didn't, they only had the after-school, but they're also right next door to Marigold. So as far as, you know. Older siblings being able to walk back right over and be with younger siblings, that's definitely, you know, a plus for that program. So. I'm just kind of throwing stuff out there, but just my thoughts about it.
Yeah, and, and Riley isn't able to be here tonight, and, um, I'm not sure what school she looked at, so. Um, don't have that information, but I'll make a note, because, because someone brought this up before, I don't think it was you. Um, the smart, it's called Smart Start?
Mm-hmm, Smart Start. It's right next door to Marigold.
Okay.
I think Leanna mentioned it at the last charter meeting.
Okay.
Just because I know it's, it's a, it's a big, uh, daycare preschool subsidized. Right now, you know, connected pretty much to another school, but yeah, like they even have busing where they do like after-school, where they used to. I don't. I mean, it's been a while, but, um, where they would even go and, and pick up from other schools and do their after-school programs there. So. You know, there was a lot of conveniences for other parents to put their littler ones in there and then to be able to have the after-school program, so. But they're going to have a lot of knowledge about how they've made all that work. Um. Yeah, this is, okay, great.
Yeah, you'll do that work. Okay.
And then I, yeah, I'd be interested in knowing where those subsidy cutoffs are and what the income qualifications or minimum income would be on that.
Yeah, and all I can say is, yeah, I've, I've reached out to the state and some of my friends in this industry, it said. I, I literally, I called the Department of Ed on it and I got a phone number that referred me in. To another phone number that referred me back to the first phone number that I already called. So it literally left. One of those loops and, um, my information from Heather, my friend Heather is in it, it's like. Lot of turnover, a lot of crazy, changing from Department of Education to Social Services and just. Lot of changes going on. So that's why I think I'm having such a hard time getting more specific information, but.
Yeah, because I mean, if the income limits are like, you know, twenty thousand dollars a year or. Thirty thousand dollars a year, we're gonna. We're going to have a lot. We're, I mean, we probably have a lot of students now that qualify, so hopefully we'd have a good word of mouth, but then again. We're talking about only being able to help them either three hours a day or eight hours a day, you know.
Yeah, okay. So I'm feeling like, um, uh, my battery's running out, for one thing. I'm feeling, um, like, um, I'll move forward with this proposal. And then the other piece of it is just in kind of. Karen, I hope you have some thoughts. This is kind of the direction I'm going as far as working on sustainable school costs. What's the in, what's the cost of running our current programs? Um, and then we can look at what kind of income will cover those costs and that sort of thing.
Well, the way you broke it down is amazing. I mean, thank you for putting all the work into that, because it really makes it a lot easier to understand and it, you know. Which is, makes it easier for me to critique, so sorry.
No problem whatsoever. This is why it's, this is why it's here, you know. Um, yeah, this is why I did it and.
Yeah, it's super helpful.
It's, it's good work for me to have done also, so thank you. Yeah, it's a good way to move this forward. Tyron, any thoughts? You can talk to me later too, if you have other ideas.
None at this time, really. Um, I do want to comment though that I think if this program were successful. It could bring more families to our school, which would ultimately increase ADA, so.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think that maybe we need to figure out what that goal is. And I think that maybe we need to figure out what that goal is, right? What are, you know?
Yeah, and that's part of my, my next work. Right now I have this next week I'll work on the, the rest of this week I'll work on the charter board, but we may wanna have an additional meeting in late January, early February around sustainable schools, so we can keep having that conversation, especially as we learn more about what the actuals and the budget are gonna be so for next year.
Yeah, because like with this program, what's the goal? Is it to hope to filter students into Blue Oak? Is it to provide an affordable childcare option? Is it to provide a affordable preschool where we're, it's really structured preschool, not really childcare, it's more about preschool? And I think if we have like kind of that idea of what exactly we want this program to look like, then we can kinda tailor it and figure out the numbers around it and who, and, and, you know, budget accordingly as far as, you know, staffing it and things like that.
All right, we will keep on this then.
All right.
Some good information and some good help.
Okay, great, yeah. Yeah, and I really wanna be involved in the sustainable school, so if you ever wanna bounce something off or some feedback. I've done daycare, had, you know, had to put my kids in daycare, been a full-time working mom, not working, so kind of done a little bit of all of it. So definitely have a little bit of feedback with my millions of children, my household.
Great, thank you, Amber.
No problem. Class numbers and services, so that's all under the same.
Yes, that's, this is as far as I got with thinking about how we're gonna break this down and move forward on the design.
So, right, and then are we gonna show that to the council then too?
Yes.
Okay, great. But do we need to recommend or anything, or it's just FYI for now?
It's FYI for now. You're not saying, at this point, I wouldn't want you to say we should start a preschool program. I don't think we have enough information yet. So when we get there, then we'll do that recommendation, but right now it's just information for everyone.
Okay, great. So it looks like we're done. We will, our next meeting will be on February eighth, same time. And if we need, nobody has anything else, we'll adjourn. All right, everybody have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that hard work, Susan, I appreciate it.
All right.